We'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. For the record, this is Newark City School District Board of Education regular meeting, being held at the Roosevelt Administrative Services Office at 6:30 PM on June 6, 2016. Jeff, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Blowers?
Here.
Mr. Carr?
Here.
Ms. Nickam?
Here.
Mr. Weber?
Here.
Mr. Blind?
Here.
Have a quorum of five?
Mr. Carr, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, any resolutions or recognitions, Doug?
Not tonight.
No special reports. We'll move to communications from the floor. If anybody'd like to address the board, please step to the podium, give your name, your address, and you have up to five minutes to speak. Okay, going once, twice, and three times. Okay, now we'll move on to the public meeting on the issue of the employment of Jeffrey Anderson by the Newark City School District Board of Education. Members of the public are invited to provide input to the board on the issue of Jeffrey Anderson's reemployment in the district following his retirement. Speakers are limited to five minutes each, and all public comment will be closed after thirty minutes. A sign-up sheet will be used if necessary. I don't think we have a sign-up sheet as it stands, so if anyone would like to address the board on the reemployment of Jeffrey Anderson, now is the time. You're looking a little apprehensive there.
I was just gonna say, "Thank you."
Okay, with that, we will close that. And that being the case, Jeff, we'll move on to treasurer's recommendations.
Okay, item 2A is approval of the board meeting minutes for the May 9, 2016 regular meeting, May 17, 2016 special meeting. Item 2B is the approval of the May financial reports. I put a packet, a little packet, a finance packet, it starts with the two pages that applies to me, and if you look at page three, at the top right-hand corner, I think it says 2B in it. That is the actual bank reconciliation for May 31, 2016, showing a balance of $41,352,376.49. If you turn one more page, I split that balance down between funds. The general fund is $26,480,000. Bond Retirement is $1,890,000. Permanent Improvement is $2,270,000. Building Fund is $870,000. Food Services is $1,660,000. OSSC Local is $120,000. OSSC Project State Share is $1,630,000. The Insurance Fund is $3,170,000. Classroom Facilities is $2,660,000. Miscellaneous Other Accounts is $610,000, with that total balancing back to the $41,360,000. Item 2C is the next page. This is the supplemental appropriation to get us up to May, where we need you to pay, and we earned interest in an amount of $14,788.22. If you turn the next page, item 2D is the temporary appropriation resolution for 2017. That is so when we close the books on June 30, we can go ahead and purchase materials, order materials for the fiscal year 2017, 16-17 school year. This gives us the operation to do that. The final permanent appropriation for the school year 2016-17 will be done in October, once we close out the books for 2016. This is the temporary one that allows us to continue to do business in June, July, and August, and September until we get the permanent ones approved. Item 2E is the reminder that the special meeting on June 30, to do the final appropriation for the June 30, 2016 fiscal year. It is at 4:30 here at the board office. Item 2F is the normal approval to pay invoices. In this case, it's for the Board of Education to pay for a student that goes to East Knox local schools. They were, I believe, court placed, and the amount is $6,036.14. It's before the board because it was a late invoice coming in for the 2014-15 school year, but our special needs department has confirmed that that is a good bill and that we do need to pay East Knox for that. Any questions?
Do we have a motion?
So moved.
I'll second. Comments, questions?
I would like to move the special meeting from 4:30 to 4:45, if everyone's agreeable.
The special meeting to 4:45?
Yes.
It's all right with me.
What day of the week is that?
It's a Friday.
It's Friday. It's gonna be about a ten-minute meeting for me?
Is it June 30?
June 30.
That's a Thursday.
Oh, I thought it was a Friday.
It's Thursday, I think, Wednesday or Thursday?
Thursday.
Thursday? It's a Thursday. 4:45, okay?
Yes.
Works for me.
4:45.
And then, for this invoice, would there have been, where we would've already voted on that contract at that?
East Knox had not submitted it to us. Sometimes schools get lost in the paperwork, and they had not covered that particular student, is my understanding. And when they were doing the review for the end of the year, they caught it, billed it, asked us for it. It was services that our student did receive. So legally, we probably would not have to pay it because they don't have a contract.
Right.
Morally, we probably should pay it.
Right. I get it. I mean, we do a lot with East Knox, it's not typical with them to have that situation.
Any other questions? I got a motion by Mr. Blowers, a second by Mr. Carr.
With the change requested.
With the change requested to 4:45.
Yep. So call the roll, please.
Mr. Blowers?
Yes.
Mr. Carr?
Yes.
Ms. Nickam?
Yes.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
All ayes, thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to superintendent's recommendations. Okay, on your agenda, item 3, supplemental contracts. It's been requested to, we'll move Zach Wilkins to 3B. Everybody else will be 3A, and Zach will be voted on separately on 3B. Okay, under 3A, personnel retirements and resignations. We talked about Jeff. Bobby Nash, Roberta Nash, I want to point out that three weeks ago, she was gonna give us another week, and had a conversation with her husband, and Bobby retired. She's an attendance officer. She's been here twenty-two years and has done a fantastic job, so we began the process of trying to find somebody to replace Bobby. So we have an attendance opening, and I did want to point out, she's been, done a fantastic job for us. Kathy Sherman, another longtime employee, will retire on July 1. Kathy's a secretary out at the maintenance and bus facility out there. She's had several jobs in the district. We appreciate Kathy's service to the district. Appointments and assignments. We have several teachers to hire and a dean of students. I will ask two teachers to stand up, Hannah Endershot and Talisha Knight, standing in the back of the room. I think you've probably met both these two, are from Westerville, and they just met each other tonight. Westerville's a big place, and we know that, so, but they'll both be teaching at Legend. So, kinda funny how you lived in Westerville and probably went to different high schools, did you?
Yes.
I know we have a South and a-
Central.
And a Central, and now you're gonna be teaching a couple rooms away, probably. So, welcome aboard, we're really excited to have you, and so, great backgrounds. While we've got you here, can you tell me why Westerville Central is north of Westerville North?
Because it was spelled L.A.
I've always wondered that. Accountants are obsessive enough that those things bother us.
Central's relative.
Central, one out over North Er.
Oh, North Er, yeah, there you go. Well, welcome, and we're excited, you're going to a wonderful school, and Mrs. Cooper's back there supporting you tonight, and that shows the kind of support you'll get in that building from your administrator, so it's good to see you and welcome. Also, we have a new to the district, but not new to the community, Adam Rose. Adam, would you please stand up? Adam's a graduate of Newark, and impressive resume. I didn't know he was, and a teacher, and a former teacher here, but Adam is a state track champion, shot put, two-time MAC champion in shot put, so, served notice to the kids at Liberty, they might get shot-putted across the country if they don't follow the good behavior pattern, and Adam's also, lives out by Hillview, and his kids attend Hillview Elementary and that, so, Adam, we're excited to have you, you're back here. We really checked Adam out, he's a tremendous leader, and we're excited about that. And you can see what type of building, Adam, you're going into, you're the person you're replacing, and your principal are both here tonight supporting you, and so, it's a very good administrative team, and we're happy to have you. And one thing I found out about Adam is he's a chef. Yeah, he's got a pizza oven out back, outdoor pizza oven, so, Adam-
I almost got-
Pizza.
I almost got-
Pizza at the July board meeting, don't forget, so, yeah, so, anyhow, that's what he likes to do in his spare time. He's got about five minutes to get some baked goods here before we- Absolutely, yeah, absolutely, Adam, run home and gear up, so. Also, under item 3 is a list of supplemental contracts. Let me go back to 2, just to let the board know. Barbara and Maura Mindy have, you know, they did a great job this spring going out and getting, so, we're about at five positions right now, and some will be offered this week that we need to fill in the district, so that's really good for the beginning of June. So, great job, ladies. Supplemental contracts, 3A would be the list of all those supplementals. Zach Wilkins would be 3B, which you'll vote separately, and so, we'll pull that aside. Salary and position adjustments, Melissa Phelimly, that should reflect Masters plus 30 under the certified contracts. Under 6, administrative contracts, we, and I just mentioned, we have a fantastic administrative team, great, great people, and really excited about that. But, you know, I've been here seven years, and I haven't done this before, so I'm gonna, Barb, Maura, and Mindy, you come, please come stand up front here for a minute, would you please?
They were hoping you'd ask that.
Yeah, I'm sure they are. And I haven't done this before, but I want our, I want the board to know, and I believe you do already know, you're good, don't keep backing out the door, you're good right there. I want our Board of Education to know, and I want our community to know. Yeah, well, I came in here seven years ago, you know, we were restructuring some things in the district, and just coming off $8 million in cuts and a reduction of an assistant superintendent in the district, and so, that is a big challenge for us, and I've never asked to replace that, and I'm telling you, we don't need that back. But, I also want to point out that each one of these three have been placed in a position, a director of personnel, director of curriculum, at one time, both director of curriculum. Now, Maura's taken that on. I asked Mindy last summer to be the director of student services, and she has really worked her tail off this year, and has done a fantastic job leading that. So, I wanted to point out that, even though, and I tell them, you're a director of personnel, but you're also many other duties as assistant superintendent, and these ladies lead with a lot of class and a lot of vision in our district. They step out of the way and give credit where, when it's needed, and don't step in front and say, "I did everything," so, that's a tremendous quality of a great leader, but they step up and accept responsibility when needed, so, I did want to point that out, and I'm gonna look off 3B now and tell you, I appreciate what you do. This district is on the right path because of a lot of your vision and your hard work, so, I did want to point that out. Can we give them a hand? No, just give them a hand. Thank you. Sit down. I haven't done that because we have, we have a lot of tremendous leaders in this district, but these three are in positions that have allowed us to move forward. Also, 6B is the improvement of the SRO contract with the Newark City Police Department, and we appreciate Dave Bardley in the back of the room, and appreciate the service we get from the Newark City Police Department, wonderful people there. Nursing contract with the Licking County Health Department for the purpose of providing diagnostic health services for Blessed Sacrament School and St. Francis School. Again, they'll be paid with auxiliary funds, but administered through the district. Also, on D is the resolution to issue a continuing contract for Mike Kapachi, that's just one staff member. And so, we have items 1 through 6 with 3B pulled separately. And we also have the addendum. I included those, I think I, oh yes, the addendum, some of them were included in that. Also see the addendum, which has some appointments and also some supplemental contracts. Thanks, Tom. So, do we have the motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion, questions?
My one question is, is why a teacher that's been with the district for two years gets a continuing contract after two years?
It's a no current contract, right?
So, his-
He might nobody came, so we have to honor that. I have one, he's been in the district for two, and he's been in the district for two years, if they come with a continuing contract.
So, our union contract honors his previous service at a different district after two years?
Correct.
Any other questions?
How long's that contract?
We have two, well, it continues. The teacher contract has two more years.
Supplemental's a year per year.
Yeah, we did a three-year contract, this is your one of a contract with our teachers. Yep. Any other questions? Okay, call the roll, please.
Ms. Nickam?
Yes.
Mr. Blowers?
Yes.
Mr. Carr?
Yes.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
Mr. Blind?
Yes.
All ayes.
And now, we would accept a motion for the supplemental for Zachary Wilkins as high school marching band director.
So moved.
Second?
Comments, questions? Okay, call the roll, please.
Ms. Nickam?
Yes.
Mr. Blowers?
No.
Mr. Carr?
Yes.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
Mr. Blind?
No.
Two no's, three As, he will get his contract.
Okay, under Students in Curriculum, item 1, the intent to adopt textbooks. These textbooks below will be in the superintendent's office from June 6 through July 11, Introduction to Statistics and Data Analysis, Objects Oriented Programming and Data Structures, Meyer Psychology for AP. Under item 2, approval of the Athletic Drug Testing Service, and that's administered by Mr. Doty and Mr. Quackenbush, and even though the grant ran out probably five, six years ago now, the board has agreed to continue to do that, and we appreciate that because that's a huge benefit for our students, it gives them an out when they're in a group. And also, the approval of the student handbooks, so that's item 2, 1 through 2. Do we have a motion to approve Superintendent's Recommendations B 1 and 2? I'm moving.
Second.
Comments and discussion? I will give a shout-out to the drug testing program. I think that is outstanding, that we do that, and I've often heard it said, "It gives the students a reason to say no," and I think that's the most important thing. It's not a game of gotcha, it's giving them a reason to say, "No, I can't do that," and I think it's very important. So, call the roll, please, Jeff.
Mrs. Nickam?
Yes.
Mr. Blowers?
Yes.
Mr. Carr?
Yes.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
Mr. Blind?
Yes.
Okay, we have no gifts tonight to approve. Under D, business, it's recommend the board accept the bids for the project paving parking lot at Whitefield, which we had two bids. Awarding of bids to Robertson Construction, that work is to be completed by August 1, so, here in the next month, we'll see paving and curbing and those things going in, and again, we will use that on Friday nights, on our high-traffic nights for handicap accessible parking. That will also be the parking for JV football, soccer, freshman football, general parking, I think we can get in there. So, that means that we've reconfigured underneath, tore out some things and been through that, constructed a new concession stand on Turn 4 there, and parking lot, and then, we're out for drawling right now on the east end of the bleachers, the ticket booth, which will go in the parking lot area, and also the press box upstairs, and we're showing two versions of the press box, one going towards the field, one going back towards the parking lot, and we'll get prices on those. Our goal is to be out in October to bid those projects, and come back, or come to the board in October to award a bid in October, and then Thanksgiving will be our last football game, that we would host a playoff, because if you remember, we did two soccer and two football last year. You get to Thanksgiving, and it's basketball weekend, and we can't find enough workers, so, we will host, or be available to host those things, and so, that person or company could start right in, right after Thanksgiving, and that's our, that's our goal on that, so. Okay, item D, also, 5 other, 5A agreement with Catapult Learning. This, again, is auxiliary funds for Blessed Sacrament School to provide the reading and math services there. So, do we have a motion to approve Superintendent's Recommendations 3D?
So moved.
I'll second. Comments, questions?
Moved was Blowers?
Mike, yep.
Second was Carr?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, I was a little slower than I-
I will comment that this bid on the parking lot is considerably lower than what the original estimate had been.
$212 was the rip last time.
So, that went the right direction for us. Okay, call the roll, Jeff.
Mr. Blowers?
Yes.
Mr. Carr?
Yes.
Ms. Nickam?
Yes.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
Mr. Blind?
Yes.
Thank you, all ayes.
Okay, Board of Education Reports and Recommendations. It's recommended the Board of Education adopt policies listed below as shown in the appendix and is announced at the May 9, 2016 meeting of the Board of Education. From the SALT Committee, the hardest-working committee there is.
That's right.
File 5112, entrance requirements, file 5200, attendance, file 5320, immunization, file 9270, equivalent education outside the schools, parentheses, homeschooling. And then, we might as well vote on everything together. Item B is Superintendent's Goals. As per Superintendent's Contracts, each year, the board and the superintendent set a series of goals for that year, and it has been tentatively determined, pending vote by the board, that those goals were met for this past academic year. So, do we have a motion to approve items 4A and B?
I'll make it.
Second?
Second.
Questions, comments, discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
Mr. Blowers?
Yes.
Mr. Carr?
Yes.
Ms. Nickam?
Yes.
Mr. Blind?
Yes.
All ayes, thank you.
And with that, we'll move on to board discussion. Mike, you're at the hot seat.
All right. I'd like to make a first, give a personal thank you to Jeff Anderson for all the work he has done and continues to do for this district. Sincerely appreciate you, Jeff. I'd also like to welcome our new teachers, and it's wonderful that our principals came with them to introduce them, that says a lot. So, thank you, and you're gonna find Newark City Schools and the city of Newark, we hope you'll be here to be part of the community, there's so many great things going on. Downtown's been renovated, it is a wonderful place to be, so, so glad you're here. And I spent a part of my life in Westerville, and it's a beautiful town, it was a few years ago, but it's a beautiful town, beautiful place, so, welcome. I'd like to take this, just a minute, as a board member, not speaking on behalf of the board, but as a board member, where I stand, on how important it is that we recognize the impact of our classroom teachers, and that our classroom teachers need to be in classroom on a regular basis, because we all know that our students need that stability. And I know of the pressures of all the legislation, and we have to meet all these stick requirements to have our teachers out for service, we need to try to keep our teachers in that classroom as regular as possible. And as we add people, as we hire in, we know the principals have a BOBO of work to do, we know that, but we have to remember, we've got to keep people accessible and ready to serve our students, because they are getting left, because we're spending so much time on our paperwork for the governor. And I wish the governor would take a day to spend in our classroom, a day to spend in the principal's office. And, but unfortunately, we have, we have to take it and work with it, and I'm very proud to be part of this district as a board member, that you guys take this in a very positive, very professional way, and you make it work, so I thank you for that. And with that, I pass.
I'd like to also welcome you all to our district. I never knew you may be 23 years removed, but I came here 23 years ago, I never knew Duco High existed, but here I am, still with kids and great kids, and I think you'll find it's a great place to be, also, a great time to be again.
I guess I'm next. Congratulations to all the graduates. Unfortunately, I was a little under the weather and unable to attend graduation this year, and was very disappointed because it's my favorite event of the entire year, so, I'm sorry, but there were lots of photos on Twitter, so I wasn't able to follow it on Twitter, thank you very much for that, Seth, and all the comments I've heard in the community are very good about how it went, and of course, you guys had a beautiful day for it, so that's awesome. So, congratulations, graduates. Welcome to the new staff members, welcome to the team. I think you'll find a really nice home here, I hope so, but thank you for coming in tonight also.
Interesting choice of words, "under the weather," in light of last year. Fantastic, though. New folks, we're so glad to have you, and it's, it's not an easy job to get into the district, because a lot of people want to be here, because it's, it is a good time to be a Wildcat, and so, but welcome, and we're thrilled. Mr. Rose, I'll be seeing you, because I got one going that direction for three years, so, wonderful to have you fill in that position. And Nick, wonderful job, I still don't like you. Child, but it's okay, you abandoned my child, but hopefully, Adam will fill the, will fill that gap. And, but Maura Mindy and Barb, Doug was right to recognize you, there are a lot of things you do that go unnoticed in the district, and I appreciate what you do, as well as Ellen and Diane who are here, you know, making their new folks feel well, and it's just a, it's just a neat school district, it really is, and so, it's a good, good district to be a part of, and wonderful, hope the kids are enjoying their summer. I'm sure they're at home trying to wake up about 7, 7:30, starting reading and stuff like that every day, and, not mine, but some other people's kids are probably doing that, mine, but it is, it's a wonderful time to be a cat.
Oh, you come to me now.
Wake up.
It's, it's always a great time to be a cat, for the young ladies that are here tonight. I was a transferee, and I've been here seven years. It is my intent, although you're seeing that I'm retiring, it is my intent that they will give me a new contract, and the reason I'm retiring is because of change of benefit in the service system, the state employee system. It is my desire to stay here until I truly retire.
Man, those events, we have some great kids. Our hair, Barbara had tears in her eyes, standing beside me, we're in the back of the-
We were in the back of the, the theater downtown at the orchestra concert. And a stage is full of kids, wonderful music and, and whether it be music or athletics or plays, you know, those type of things. We've just got some fantastic talent of kids here with some people that are doing some great job, our staff doing a great job with our kids. But also from an academic standpoint, we, we, you know, we, we were just talking, Seth and I were talking today, in four years, we have four students out of Newark City Schools that are having a military appointment, academy appointment. Four students. We went from, best we can tell, from '86 until four years ago to get one. And we have four. We have, and you stand there and you watch awards programs. I know Nick and Diane were stood along the wall and watched how many students were recognized at, at Liberty. Legend, the night before, I was out with Ellen and, and our kids are really achieving some great things academically. And when you see them leaving seniors and get two of them full rides to Ohio University this year and, and two military academy appointments and things like that, boy, it's, I'll tell you what, it does make your hair stand up, put tears in your eyes because we're just proud of the kids and, because it's about giving them opportunities in our district. Over 2 million through Call to College. So, over $2 million now through Call to College and, and that. So, we had a great end of the year. We're looking forward to the beginning of the year. So, I also want to, Harry Ballinger stepped in the back back there. And every year we try to say, what makes those programs we're talking about run well? I'm talking about our fine arts programs. You have to have good parents and community members helping raise money and, and do those things. And Harry, don't tell Jeff and Pam I said that. I, I believe our athletic department's second to none in central Ohio of that way. And I also believe, because I've seen what Harry, leadership through our athletic boosters are providing opportunities for our student athletes. And so, Harry, thank you for everything you and, and all of your hard-working folks do. It doesn't go unnoticed. We do appreciate that. I do want to, one last thing I want to point out because sometimes I, I think, you know, I tell Maura, this is how we roll in this district. I'm going to see Luke Bryan in a couple weeks, so I got to get ready for Florida Georgia Line, Luke Bryan at the Ohio Stadium. This is how we roll. We were standing, standing in early January in the media center at the high school at a STEM showcase. And we had our own Willie Henderson, who will be a senior at the Naval Academy next year. Can't believe I'm saying senior, but Willie, talking about STEM camp at the Naval Academy. And we started talking about, how can we get our students to get to the Naval Academy? Maura and I, we stood, we stood around for a little bit and thought, you know what? We have basketball camp, volleyball camp. Why don't we have our own STEM camp? Because we can't send all of our students through there. So, we have 13, June 20th at the high school for one week. We have 13 staff members, our teachers, put together a STEM camp, our curriculum department with Maura. And I thought in my head, if we can get 25 to 30 kids that first year. We have 200 students signed up for STEM camp in this district. 200, the very first year. And so, thank you to the staff. You know, we worked with Jeff, found a date that our athletic camps were on. June 20th was a great week. We're providing transportation for any student who wants to go. We're providing lunch. And it costs zero through our, our budget, our curriculum budget here in the, in the district. I just said 200 kids for five days at a STEM camp. And when I say this is how we roll, this is how we roll. If I could sing, I'd get up and sing that right now. I won't do that. But I'm so excited about this opportunity for our students. And, but that, yeah, 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 you don't, you don't want to hear me sing. But I do think, I do think you want to hear my excitement for that. And I know you guys are excited about that because our board has supported our STEM initiative in this district. And so thank you for your support of that. And by having 200 students sign up for that camp shows you, that's what we should be doing. That's what we should be doing, so.
Can we get the schedule for that?
Yes, absolutely. We will email that out to you. So, yeah, it'd be great if you could pop in. It's just that, over at the high school and, and our staff was in here last week working on some, it'd be stations, kind of like a basketball station, dribbling station, shooting station, you know, they have different things that way. So, and our staff's excited about it. And it's a mix of staff members, middle and, and elementary staff members. So, we need to keep pushing forward in this district because our kids are driving that. And if our students want those opportunities, we need to provide them. And we are, so, thanks to all involved there, so. Tim, it is a great time to be a cat. That's just one reason why. Everybody does. Yep.
Tried to make as many events the last few weeks as possible. Can't make them all. One that I did attend, Warren got to for the first time, was the Junior ROTC Annual Dinner. It's an impressive evening, impressive program. It's really something, I think, to behold. Want to congratulate our roughly 330, I believe it was, graduates. Great weather that day. I would thank Tim for the connections on that, but then I've got to blame him for last year's weather and I'm not sure it quite evens out. So, we'll just be thankful we had a nice day. And one thing that I've heard a number of comments about since then is the updates that are going on down there. The concession stand that's getting close to done. Think the exterior's pretty well finished. And then the restrooms, the work underneath. I've had a lot of people that were at graduation specifically comment, you know, they'll say, "Hey, nice graduation. White field's looking beautiful." So I think people are really starting to notice that we're making some major improvements there. Also like to welcome the new staff. And you ladies that are at Legend, do not look east at about 3:30 in the afternoon because balding, semi overweight, old guys jogging is an ugly picture. So, just look to the west about 3:15. So, you know, if you-
Sight to behold.
It's a sight for sore eyes, but it's exercise.
Could've lived my whole life without knowing that.
Anyway, with that, we would accept a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
She says quickly.
Yes.
Moved by Bev.
Bev.
Ms. Nickam. Second by Mike.
Yeah, it sounds good.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So Carrie, you're adjourned at 7:11.